I see we are recording. All right, this is our planning board meeting April 20th, 2021. The FEMA flood plan and the new bylaw changes to Whitman. I don't even know what else to say. If anyone has any questions or any statements they'd like to make, Mr. Goldrosen.
Thank you, and John Goldrosen, Chairman of the CBA. But just speaking for myself, the CBA has not met and reviewed these changes as a group. So I'll just speak for myself. On the floodplain by law, can I just ask, is it available anywhere online? I couldn't find it. And.
It's on the town's website.
Where is, I went to the document center, I didn't see it there.
Let me see if I can see where it is and then give you some direction. Hold on one second.
By doing that, I mean, I'll just comment. I'm very familiar with these bylaws because in my previous professional life, I had to help towns draft and implement these and negotiate them with DCR and with FEMA. So I know, I know the routine and I know Bob Curran has told us that he's worked in these. So I'm sure they're in good order, but I just like to just take a look, just in case something jumps out at us. And obviously, I hope you'll explain at town meeting that we gotta do this. That since FEMA has amended the floodplain maps, we have to, number one, we have to have our bylaw that references the current maps. And secondly, they've got their standard format for how they want the bylaw to read. Just do it. As far as the the other, the other matter, the, I guess, codification of whatever you want to call it, of the town general and zoning bylaws. So, but I, and I, my understanding is the intent here is not to change any substantive provisions, but just reorg. My light just flickered.
It was mine, me too.
Me too.
All right, they're back, we're here for a while. Anyways, the intent is just to keep the current meaning, but just to reorganize it. And I'll, I'll comment first. I really think it's, it is indeed important to get all the town bylaws codified and digitized so they can be available for people. I've mentioned this to the, the new town administrator that when, you know, people are looking to open a business in town or do any kind of project, any, any business person, any developer, their first question is, well, where can I see the bylaws? You know, and the only towns that don't have their bylaws online are like little towns in the Berkshires with a couple hundred people. So we're way behind the curve here. So I'm all for this. So I'll just, just comment on a couple of provisions where I think the proposed changes actually do change the meaning and, and I don't think they should be changed that way. So this is just in the zoning bylaw. The definition of family in Article two, and I was looking at the redline version, it's on page 47 of the redline version. I think that definition should be left as is. The, the proposed change is a radical change in the meaning and may indeed be unconstitutional. I think before that's, if that is to be approved, it better be run by a town council.
I'll use up on that too, John.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything wrong with it the way it is. And it's also, it makes it inconsistent with some other definitions, like the definition of dwelling unit. So I don't know why that change was proposed, but I think that should be left as is. The definition of accessory use or use comma accessory was deleted. I don't know why that would be deleted if the term is used elsewhere in the zoning bylaw. So I think that ought to be left in there. One suggestion I'd make, you know, if this wouldn't be considered a substantive change is we use the term mobile home and mobile home park in the, the use table. I have it at page 56 of the redline version. And the state really now calls this manufactured housing. The state statutes that deal with mobile home parks are, I can't remember, it's chapter 32, something or other. Anyway, it's referred to as manufacturing housing. Maybe that should be changed, but if you want to leave it as is, that's okay. Well, obviously, there's so much to be changed. There's something by law at a later date when we can deal with the substance. That's really it. Other than, I also will mention the, in the general bylaws, the animal control provisions for cattle license. That's, that's a mess. And again, if we're not going to do any substantive changes, fine. But when I looked at that, you know, the Board of Appeals role should, you know, should simply say, first of all, we don't, we don't issue licenses, we issue special permits. So if what is meant is a special permit, it should say so. They use the term variance there, it would never be something subject to a variance. And I'd even, you know, if it's really going to be a license, it probably should be some other board that does it again, that that's a substantive change. But, I mean, we deal with the land use impacts of things and to some extent, a kind of license involves that. But when there's more thought given to more substantive changes, maybe it should be the Board of Health or the Animal Control Officer or Board of Selectmen, somebody other than the zoning board that's, that's doing it. So that's just a, a comment on that section. And that's, those were the, the main points that, that I saw. Other than, you know, other than the comments that hopefully the next step from here, once we've got things organized and digitized, is to really take, take a look at the zoning, the substance of the zoning bylaw. There's just so much that's outdated in there, both in terms of zoning districts and in terms of the provisions that we all need to move forward on that. And I'm certainly willing to, to help on that individually as well as, as Chairman of the CBA. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, Bob, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Does anybody else have any other comments, suggestions of any kind?
But I just asked John what page the animal control thing was on.
That's, again, looking at the redline, that's chapter 110, that begins at page 19 of redline version.
Okay, that's not.
If you look at 110-3 cattle license, that's the section that mentions the Board of Appeals.
Right?
Did I miss anything, Wayne?
No, not, not gonna say a word. I agree with everything you've said.
There's an awful lot to take in at times, but it is reworded a lot better than it was.
The thing is, I got, well, this is a public hearing. I don't think we have the ability to change anything. We can make recommendations to the selectmen, but you know, I, we can't take a vote on doing anything. Because it's, we're not here to make a vote, we're only here to make recommendations. You have to hear testimony from anyone that wants to give some and then make recommendations.
Correct.
No, I don't, I don't have anything else to say, maybe Bob does.
No, I don't have any comments. I, I did assist with some of the rewrite on this. And John, your good point about the family definition, I didn't get what they were going with, where they were going with that. But I do remember one of the attorneys was explaining it, that's a more modern definition.
Yeah, I, I disagree.
Yeah, and, and I kind of was surprised. The accessory use that probably should be put back in because the zoning bylaws refer to it so, so often. But everything else, it looks like it's a whole lot better format.
Yeah. I'd just add on the family, I mean, my particular concern is that as I read it, it seems to only allow people to live together if they are, if they are related. And I just don't think you can do that.
I don't, I don't.
Definition, you know, allows up to, you know, five unrelated persons. And that's a very common provision in many town zoning bylaws. So I think it should be left alone.
I think on the, I think on page 50, page 56, I don't like the way they've got this, the definition of what, what, what's going on. And then they've got, you know, like special permit and general business zone and all that. I don't like the way they have it after each item. It should be, I, I think we should keep that the way it used to be. Everything was, was described on the left-hand side and then you had the columns going down on the right-hand side, the way it is now. And I think that's a lot easier. If, if we had to look something up during a hearing, it would take you forever to find what you were looking for. You know what I mean, John?
Are you looking at the redline?
Yeah.
Let me, let me open.
It's on page 54.
56.
56.
56, so it's on that, 57. You know, after, after each item, then they've got what, what, where they should be. And I think it's too confusing. I think it should go back to the way the existing book has it, with what's listed on the left-hand side and then on the right-hand side, you list whether it's permitted or not permitted or a special permit.
They're trying to pull across for every different, every different area of a zone.
Yeah.
They had it set up as a chat on the old form and it was much easier to follow.
It is. I mean, if you're, if you're having a, any kind of a heated discussion on this at a hearing, it's going to take you forever to keep trying to locate what you're looking for.
Yeah, I don't know if this, because I'm looking at the redline, I guess I'd have to look at the final draft to see what it.
Yeah, well, all we have is the preliminary draft, we don't have.
Yeah. And I know you have the final draft in the document center, but I didn't look at that first. So I would agree that if, looking at the redline, I mean, the redline throws, everything's thrown off by the fact that it's a redline. So it's, you can't really tell how it's supposed to.
Elaine picked up on this too.
Okay.
Yeah, you almost need a slide rule to hold across and figure out, so you can stay on point of what you're actually looking at.
That's, that's all I have to say on it.
I mean, if, if there, if the response of the people who are drafting this is that, well, this is all true wording, then they should pull some of that, some of those things out and put them into the body of the bylaw. I'm just looking right now at A7 conversion of an existing dwelling, you know, where you've got provided that blah, 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 blah. Well, that, that's the kind of thing that probably should be in the body of the bylaw somewhere. And then you could just in this table say, you know, see definition or something, wherever they put it, you could refer it if they don't want so much text in this table. Again, that, yeah. As long as we can make out which uses are allowed in which districts, I guess I can live with. Whatever it is.
I think, I think maybe they're rushing to get it at this town meeting. Maybe they should take another year to straighten it out a little more, you know? They've done a lot of work on it. Why rush it through when, when I think there's quite a few things that could be, you know, made a little easier to understand? Especially for people, you know, when the butters come before the zoning board, they don't understand the zoning, you know? And it's tough enough for them to figure it out as it is. I think this makes it a little more difficult for the first time is to try to understand it.
And it's pretty clear on the original document.
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
Because they set up a nice chat explaining.
Right, well, that's what they needed, is in a chat format, again.
Right, yeah. It wasn't so much the context as the way they shaped it.
Can I ask a question about just what the procedure or logistic will be going, assuming you're going ahead with, to this town meeting? Is this being proposed by the planning board? And if so, and you make, you make the changes that we're proposing in, you know?
This was voted on at, I think, the, the 2017 town meeting to hire somebody to do this.
Right.
And this was submitted. And now they've got, they've, they've got it so that, you know, the, the public hearing is tonight and then it's going to be in the annual town meeting on May 3rd.
It goes to the selectmen first, right, Melissa?
Yeah, they, they have to go back to it. My understanding is it's already been given to town councils to make sure everything's worded right. But I, I don't know, I think they're trying to push it through too fast at the end. They need to take another year. And they need to have a committee, have a committee, a regular committee that's following it all the way from front to back, you know?
John, can I just mention to you that we only have the zoning section tonight? We don't have any of the rest of it.
Right. We sound like page 48, I believe is what they gave us.
I, I guess the thrust of my question is, say, everybody agrees that the definition of family should be restored to where, the way it was. I would hope that can somehow be done ahead of time, not, you know, so we're not making amendments on town halls or. I didn't know whether the planning board is going to take, you know, sort of exercise jurisdiction to make those changes or. Who's going to be?
I think they made a claim that we're not supposed to make changes, just make recommendations.
Right.
Well.
You know?
We can have Melissa write a letter to the selectmen as we close this meeting and say, we've held the public hearing and these are the three recommendations that we see that we would recommend as it relates to the zoning. We can't, we can't really say anything though about the the 10, 110-3, because we don't have that.
Yeah.
But we can mention the accessory use and the family issue.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
And if the Board of Appeals did the same thing, maybe they would take it as a consideration.
Is this something we brought up also at the town meeting when they have that?
Yeah, but we're trying to avoid having the changes happen.
I see.
All right, as long as I know that it's a bonus selection, I mean, please, please do make your recommendations, but I'll take it on myself to, just to write a letter on my own behalf on those points to reinforce it to the board.
Well, you can, you can add my name to it, John. I don't, we just want to do.
The zoning board isn't meeting until April 26th. I don't know what the selectmen's schedule is, so.
Yeah, town meetings may serve unless they postpone.
I.
Floodplating a meeting tonight, I believe.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, okay.
We should send a message up to them, tell them to come down so we can land base them.
Come down where?
They can come to my basement if they want.
Yeah.
Do we have any members of the public who have joined us?
No, no, one person did come in but left. He did not even get his picture up there. So he never even unmuted himself, he just started to join and then left. Damn something is all I caught.
Okay.
John, John, can you, can you, can you tell me what the issue is with the accessory use of structure?
They just, they struck out the definition of accessory use and I don't know why.
Well, I see it here in the redline. They didn't touch.
I see it crossed out in the redline.
What page?
Page.
I'm in 49 of 103.
Okay.
I think the one you're seeing, the first redlined item was adult entertainment establishment. But before that, just before that is accessory use of structure and they didn't touch it.
What about use, oh, maybe that's it. Maybe, I saw that they crossed out use comma accessory.
Yeah, so they just narrowed it down so that they left it in the first.
Okay, so they were just eliminating duplication.
Okay, so they didn't, they didn't touch that. And that should be okay.
All right. Bob, perhaps before you got on, I, I realized I didn't have a copy of the proposed floodplain bylaw and I couldn't find it.
Oh.
Sorry.
Yeah, I have it, I don't have it electronically, John, I have it here. But I think it probably goes, just so everybody knows, that this is the second time we've done this. And the first time took about three months. We had it all finished, then COVID hit. And so they, we had a deadline date, we met it. And COVID hit and they pulled it all back because other communities couldn't finish their bylaw. But then FEMA decided to have their way with it and they changed everything. So we adopted most of their language and I worked with Eric Carlson from the DCR and town councils. So I, I think the bottom line is, is the floodplain bylaw, we had to intermingle the the other watershed part of our bylaw, which is identified on our zoning map. And I did look, we got all that together, town council went through it, they viewed it, they don't see anything wrong with it. Then we sent it to DCR and they approved it as well. So if we change anything else in this language, then we may not be eligible for flood insurance. But the other thing that's important that I didn't know is that there are only 10 properties in this town that gets floodplain, flood insurance.
Yes, it's very small.
Bob.
Yes.
Under that floodplain, under the new one, under section F, subsection Roman numeral five to Roman numeral seven, those three paragraphs are all new and sub, under G.
What is the title on it, Wayne?
Title on it, well, it's on the, it's on the section F permit.
And then, now that's, that's required.
Roman numeral five through Roman numeral seven is all new and I think it's great. That wasn't part of the original one.
Right.
And then under section G subdivisions, number one and two, and H is all new. And I think that's great. Those two paragraphs or three paragraphs we added, I think that's a great improvement.
Yeah, it is. And it's a lot cleaner language, so.
That, that wasn't part of the original, I thought, because I read it three times before I picked up on it, I think it was a great addition.
Right.
I don't think we have any objection to it at all, Bob.
Yeah, and this is the third time since I've been in Whitman that we've done the floodplain bylaw. The last time it was adopted at town meeting by the, and it was the Board of Health that had control over. And the only, well, actually, it wasn't adopted at town meeting, it was because we couldn't get it in time for town meeting. So the Board of Health took it as part of their rules and regulations. So now we've got to fix all that. We fixed it once and then we fixed it twice. And I think this time they got it right. I think they did a good job.
I'll tell you, those two new paragraphs, I think are fantastic. They weren't before.
Yeah, so we didn't lose anything. If anything, we gained more ability for enforcement and it made the Building Commissioner the floodplain administrator. I think that's a good thing.
So now you gotta hang around a couple more years so you can enforce it.
Yeah. Well, you guys have control anyway. Any construction in the floodplain requires a special permit from the Board of Appeals. So, and that's always been that way, so.
Yeah.
And when you say that, Bob, you mean in a hazard zone?
In, in something that is actually within the floodplain. And there's only been one permit since I've been in town that actually came in that was technically in the floodplain. But other than that, there's been nothing.
I think that was denied by the zoning board too, if I remember.
The box is just being, first of all, yeah, this should be in the zoning bylaw, having the Board of Health, it is just, that was just like an emergency thing to satisfy FEMA and DCR, but it doesn't really make sense. So is this being proposed as a separate article to amend the zoning bylaw to strike out the existing district language and replace it with this new?
Right, it will replace everything, yeah, within the floodplain bylaw and the watershed overlay district.
Okay.
Okay, so you know it is not tied into council. It's not tied into council. And it's, yeah, it does, um, $100,000. Yeah, okay. So, yeah, just make your offer, let anybody else.
I don't, I don't know what that noise is in the background. I don't have anybody talking on my screen, but I hear somebody talking. Is that somebody?
It's not us.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure.
But is it somebody from the public?
No, I have nobody else waiting to get in or anybody, you know? That's why I was wondering, I didn't know if it was background noise, but it sounded kind of official. All right, does anybody have anything else they'd like to add or comment on?
I would just like to make sure that we're clear on what we should have Melissa let the selectmen know about. And it's the definition of family.
Yep.
And our concern about 50, page 56 being chatted a little different to be more clear. Is that correct? Because you've taken accessory use off the table and.
Yep, just the definite.
John's going to talk to them about the 110-3 Board of Appeals piece.
But it's not, it's not just page 56, it's where the, where the whole listing of all the different things are.
Right, we'll, we'll, we'll explain it to Melissa. I can, I can talk to her tomorrow if you want. But I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss anything that we want to bring before the selectmen, because it should be done quickly.
Everything John said we should run before.
Yeah, no, that, it's going to sound to the definition of family at this point.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because one person can be a family.
Yep.
But three people can also be a family.
With everything that's been going on, you have multiple families living under one roof in some cases, everything's been going on with COVID and everything.
And a family does not have to be a married couple.
And they don't have to be related.
No, of course not.
But the new definition, if, if the new definition would put in, I read it as meaning that they would have to be related.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think that's legal anymore, is it?
That's right, that's right.
Right. So we'd like it to stay the way it was, right, John?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything to add? Wayne, you always have something to add.
I, I think I've said 20. I don't know enough to close my mouth a lot of times.
No, we'd like, we like your input, thank you.
Five more years to put up with me. After that, I'll just be babbling anyway.
Hopefully we'll all be together to do it soon. So, all right, if nobody has anything else to comment, make our recommendation to Melissa, we can get that finalized. And we can close our public portion of the meeting, I guess, because nobody, there's only one person that briefly came on. So I don't know, do we have to give them a certain amount of time or?
No.
It's been a half an hour, so.
No, we've held, held a public hearing and no, no, no citizens have come in except Mr. Goldrobin, who is the Chairman of the CBA and the Building Commissioner. And we've, we've all expressed our opinions on it. So I, in my opinion, I think we've satisfied the requirements for a public hearing.
Good enough for me. Bob, John, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
You guys have a good night.
Thanks.
Good night, guys.
I'll see you in another week or two, John.
Yeah.
Adam?
We hope.
Before you leave, are you okay with checking in with Melissa tomorrow on these pages that we'd like to look at?
Absolutely. We can, and we can write a recommendation, I'll sell, you know, we can formalize our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
On that, on the definition of family. I think that, that's all I. On that, on the definition of family. I think that, that's all, that's the only change that we had anyway.
Where, where, where are you meeting with, with Melissa?
I just, I could call her in the morning or. You know, do you have anything else you need me to sign, Melissa?
Uh, no, I think I'm good right now.
Okay.
Well, well, Adam, we have more than the definition of family. We also want them to look at the. Use regulations which run from page fifty five through page. Sixty and to improve the format. Our recommendation would be to leave it the way that it was because it was clearer.
Return it to the original way.
Okay, so I see you're saying, well, the, the P, the SP in the end.
Right, but that, that impacts pages fifty five through sixty.
I mean, I just write that down so I have it.
So I don't have to call Melissa now because I've just told her. If you have any questions, Melissa, you can call me.
Yeah, I got it written. I just wanted to make sure. I forgot about that part, so.
I'll, I'll, I'll see Melissa in the morning too. She's my boss tomorrow for a couple of hours.
Okay, well, then we all don't need to reach out to one of us to be enough.
Yeah, you know, if you have any issues, Melissa, just let me know.
Okay.
You know, and I'll give you, I'll give you a call like lunchtime tomorrow.
Okay.
Make sure you're all set and, you know, if we have, there's anything else we need to do.
Okay.
All right. Is there anything else? Everybody all good?
Listen, we're going to be on again next Tuesday night, huh?
There we go.
For our regular bi-weekly meeting.
Yes. You know, hopefully I'll last on Zoom. We'll see.
Do, do we have any new business coming up next week, you know?
Um, I believe there is a set of plans that I just got a call about, so I'll have to go and pick those up.
Okay.
Right. All right, so that leaves our motion by Alani.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Elaine. All in favor, Wayne?
Uh, in favor.
Alani?
In favor.
Lane?
In favor.
I am in favor. Mr. Goldrosen, thank you very much for attending. I appreciate your help.
Thanks.